Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome. We would like to begin the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget. We'll start with folks that want to speak in favor and then we will do folks that want to speak against. And then upon the conclusion of the public hearing, we will open the open mic portion of the evening before we get into full meeting. So, starting with the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the budget? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Last call for anyone that wants to speak in favor. We will close that portion of the public hearing and open the portion of the public hearing for anyone who'd like to speak against. Anyone wishing to speak against the fiscal year 2026 budget? Last call for folks that wish to speak against. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on the 2026 fiscal year budget and we'll move into open mic. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in the Lynn Public Schools District and have discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. We'll start with the signup sheet. First, if people could say their name and address, and first one is Phil O'Connor.
So, I wish to begin by apologizing. I did not sign up in favor or against, but I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget, so my apologies. But I, I'm sorry, Phil O'Connor. I live at forty-nine Monroe Street, and as of yesterday, I'm the president of the Lynn I want to open by thanking you all. We know that bargaining can create a lot of tension. However, this district showed that we can collaborate despite existent, or external nonsense, most notably from the federal government, whose wage of tax on public education, unions, and most importantly, our students and families. Despite this, despite all that, the school system came together and we settled a fair contract. Now, for the first time in forty years, the teachers, therapists, and paraprofessionals of Lynn will start the school year with a new contract, no retro check necessary. And, you know, even in times of celebration, you know, part of our job is to hold each other accountable, as a union and as management, too. And while I'm committed to working and collaborating, developing this public relationship together with you all, I do have some concerns about the budget, specifically the impact it will have on student-facing staff, many whom are in my local. While the number of teaching and S L's positions closed has changed, and I'm happy to hear that there's been some movement specifically around the clinicians as well, many of which have been unfilled for years, changed, which has changed numerous times since the publication of the budget, it's clear our schools most likely will not be fully staffed for potentially the fifth year in a row. If this district is to get out of the bottom ten percent and leave behind the stigma of low performing, teachers, clinicians, and all the student-facing faculty must be fully staffed. Our members deserve it, our students deserve it, and the community deserves it as well. In an effort to demonstrate this commitment and collaborate, to collaboration and accountability, I'd like to formally invite all my colleagues and friends that are running for reelection, school committee members, and the mayor, to our candidate forum on October seventh at six P M. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Congratulations, Phil, on your first appearance as the president of Lynn Teachers Union. Next, we have Nicole Dusette.
Nicole Dusette, seventy-three Gertrude Street, and a Lynn teacher. First, I wanted to thank the bargaining team for a tentative agreement on the new teacher's contract. We were able to work more collaboratively than ever and open the door for some very real and very necessary conversations, allowing everyone to understand the why behind our positions on some very tricky topics. As a Lynn teacher, lifelong Lynn resident, and future LPS parent, I wanted to raise some concerns I have with the upcoming budget. While my numbers may be off, my understanding is that upcoming budget opens the possibility for the potential loss of two clinicians and twenty-eight teachers. While I do understand that all of these positions were not filled this past school year, I'm concerned with the negative impact this has on our students. With enrollment continually increasing, these cuts would directly lead to more difficult learning space for our students. A number of teachers are already receiving stipends because their classes were over capacity, and by eliminating student-facing positions, this will only make things worse. Within LPS, seventy-eight percent of the students are of Hispanic Latin heritage, and forty-three percent of its students are ELLs. With sixteen of the positions being cut from the ELD department, a department that is in the most need of additional resources, there will be a catastrophic impact on these students. While I understand they were paid with ester funds that are no longer available, the loss of our parent monitors will also directly impact these students, as they have been a positive force in our schools. National resource shows that larger class sizes impedes the learning of all students, and these cuts will only serve to increase the achievement gap for some students and will have a negative impact on their access to their teacher during class, their sense of belonging, and their overall well-being. This would be especially true for our MLE students who may be coming in at a disadvantage to begin with. While there has been positive movement since our last budget meeting, there's still decisions that have been made that members don't quite understand. We, as members, are concerned with the regularity of how the budget issues negatively impact student-facing positions, but do not seem to be impacting other district positions at the same frequency. We urge you to be mindful of all of these factors when making decisions that directly affect the culture and resources provided to your teachers and their students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Tommy Tran.
Well, good morning, uh, good evening, everybody. My name is Tommy Tran, and I live on one-forty Verona Street. Currently, I am a junior at Lynn English. Today, I'm here to represent those that are dedicated towards educational needs in Lynn, students and teachers alike. For me specifically, I'm a youth leader in partnership with Neighbor to Neighbor and its youth team, a group that has an array of students from across the many public schools in Lynn, dedicated to making change in our community. We have shown up countless times at these school committee meetings to advocate for the unheard voices within, from within our schools. And one of the most notable achievements that we have accomplished was representing our district at the Massachusetts Board of Education meeting this past February, allowing for public schools within Lynn to preserve millions of dollars in funding. However, moments such as this aren't performed by students alone. Also here tonight is the L T U, also known as the Lynn Teachers Union. This group of people, which consists of teachers, paraprofessionals, and therapists all across Lynn, has worked tirelessly to negotiate with you all for a new contract with the district. It serves to increase raises for them, allows for paid parental absence, tuition reimbursement, and numerous retirement benefits, and of course, I'm sure you guys know that. We want you to recognize how meaningful it is to be able to work with the school committee, to feel heard on the problems that affect us deeply. Students are often limited by the availability of their opportunities, while teachers can be restricted on their facilitation based on the resources that they are provided. Having this space to directly communicate with you strengthens the city of Lynn to a high degree. However, I do believe that this system isn't entirely perfect either. Many students and teachers have issues that they aren't able to resolve because of their lack of power. The decision-makers who affirm certain decisions may be causing more harm than benefit when only thinking with scenarios rather than the opinions of whom they may actually be affected. A certain instance that has been of major controversy within my school is simply class scheduling, the very basic thing that determines the futures of students and teachers alike. Several advanced placement classes have been altered in ways that more students are permitted to take them. While this may seem good at face value, as it is an attempt to improve our district's data scores, this moreover restricts the students, the liberty of students on their academic pathways. It comes at the cost of stripping the honors level away from those who do not feel prepared to take a rigorous AP course, but do not feel challenged by college prep courses. A prime example of this would be handling math courses beyond Algebra II, or teaches, I mean, where this problem is heightened to an even further degree since there is no alternative against AP courses. Teachers are affected in this sense where there are several imbalances among their own schedules, as well as having students who may not perform up to standard because they are placed improperly. Classes become more advanced for a reason, and students who feel capable will should take it on their own volition. Teachers should be respected in this way, too. Placing students incorrectly in order to align with district needs is not the solution we should seek for. This is all to say that this is only one of the issues that arises from decision-making without our input. The things that we, as the educated and educators, have won in the past are certainly significant, but the true victory would be to have as much input with decision-making as possible. We are all here because we care about community and want to play a part in making a noteworthy change. Letting us work together, students, teachers, and decision-makers, would allow Lynn to become more prosperous than it ever has been. Thank you and good night.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Elena Todd.
Hello. I am Elena Todd, and I currently live on seventy-one Hollingsworth Street. I'm currently a student at Lynn English High School. I am a junior. I come here today to further discuss the issues concerning the removal of several important classes. I am a student who is currently enrolled in the class AP Precalculus. I can say that the class takes a lot of discipline and practice to be great in the subject. I can also say that many of my fellow peers struggle in this class because of the pacing and curriculum. We move through units faster than college prep Precalculus classes or honors Precalculus. Honors Precalculus and college prep Precalculus are built for students who may want a challenge but nothing greater than honors, or if they don't excel in math and don't want to hurt their grades, they are permitted to take a slower-paced class. I interviewed students who are upcoming juniors to understand their opinions on the matter. Almost every single one of these students answered with upsetting concerns and expressed the intimidation of not having an option to back out of an advanced placement class they may not be ready for. Every student who is ready for Precalculus is not ready for advanced placement. Along with the decision that has been made for our upcoming twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six school season, honors English ten has been completely removed and instead replaced with another advanced placement class. This class is AP Seminar, which is an English research-based class. Because of honors English ten being gone, students will now not have the chance to focus on their literary analysis skills with a more challenging class before jumping into junior year, where we offer AP Language and Composition or AP Literature and Composition. Sophomores have only ever been able to take one AP, and that being AP US History. Collegiate-level courses are difficult and stressful, especially given the fact these students are fifteen or sixteen years old, who, along with having to worry about a big exam at the end of the year, they also continue to have to take the state exam MCAS, which no longer is a requirement to graduate, but still updates how to improve teacher skills and student skills. After interviewing the future sophomores, every single response I got from them was how frustrated they were with the decision of cutting honors English ten, and some expressed in especial disappointment because they were afraid of AP Seminar and had to take a college prep English ten course. I hope for change and strive for student happiness. Hopefully, with everything in mind, these decisions do not stay permanent. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Moshamad Jahann.
Good evening, oh, good evening, everybody. My name is Moshamad Jahann, and I am currently a junior at Lynn English High School. I'm here again with Neighbor to Neighbor once more as a youth team leader this time, and wanted to share my appreciation with you all about how the increase in funding towards student activities will be positively impacted towards all students in the district. Although I may not be able to speak up for every single individual student, I wanted to come up here today and represent the extracurriculars and groups that I am a part of that can be impacted as well. To highlight Neighbor to Neighbor's mission during this time, I'd like to share how being able to gain this budget directed towards extracurricular funding impacts me personally. For me, what that looks like would be actually being able to participate in the Science Olympiad. In addition to participating in North Shore Science League competitions, what that also looks like for me would be being able to promote inclusivity as a part of, being a part of the inclusivity panel. It also looks like not coming back from a math team competition, knowing that we didn't have enough money to, not knowing that we didn't have enough money to purchase the right resources required for prepping for competitions. For me, the list would go on, as someone who is heavily involved in my school community. I'd also like to highlight another major when up here today. I wanted to shout out the Lynn Teachers Union for being able to negotiate an outstanding thirty percent increase in stipends for teacher club advisors. Although the hope was for more, it is certainly an amazing, an amazing accomplishment, so I wanted to congratulate both the Lynn Teachers Union and for Neighbor to Neighbor's efforts in solidarity with the Lynn Teachers Union. We see you, we hear you, and we are here for you and us students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Assanin Fortjar.
Good evening. My name is Assanin Fortchap, a recent alumnus of Lynn English High School and a youth organizer for Neighbor to Neighbor. And over the past few months, a few members of the youth team, especially the ones sitting behind me and myself, have stepped forward to this very stage bi-weekly to advocate for our schools. While it took a lot of hard work, consistency, agreements, and brutal disagreements, the culmination of our work regarding extracurriculars has led up to this very moment. If the budget for the sums of ten thousand dollars for Lynn English High School and Lynn Classical High School and five thousand dollars for Lynn Tech has passed, we can celebrate this day as a small step forward in the right direction. It could be a movement towards change. This change will be advantageous not only for our schools, but for every staff member, every teacher, and especially every student. If you remember during my first speech, I asked all of you to picture yourselves as a student at any Lynn school whose dreams turned desolate because there was not enough funding for that student to feel engaged, excited, or passionate. This decision today could turn that dull scenario into one of hope and dreams. If the funding is not approved, it would be an unfortunate tragedy for Lynn schools and one that would leave them stuck in a perpetual system of discontent. Either way, one thing here is for sure. No matter what, our work here is not done. No matter how sick you are seeing the faces sitting behind me, you're quite frankly going to have to deal with it, because our fight is not done until every single student has a fair chance at success. We won't stop, we won't stop until our failing educational system is fundamentally uprooted and changed into one of dreams, hopes, excitement, and especially passion. We won't stop until every teacher sitting here today and every teacher that could not make it is given the proper accommodations and given their accolades. So, please stand with us. We have been open, taken criticism, negotiated, and done everything in our reasonable power to create this change, and we do not plan on accepting defeat, and we do not plan on letting our efforts go to waste. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next, we have Mariana Pagan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mariana Pagan. I'm a recent graduate of Lynn English High School and an organizer with the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Team. If we learned anything this year, it's that we are stronger and our schools are better when youth voices are at the table, not just heard but included, not just acknowledged but trusted. Over the past few month, months, we've shown up to school committee meetings, organized with our peers, and spoken about, about what we need in our schools. And through that work, something powerful happened. Students and educators began standing side by side, not on opposite sides of the room. When we showed up to the Board of Education meeting and stood together to oppose KIP expansion, it wasn't just about one vote. It was about protecting our public schools and keeping millions of dollars in our district, and we did that together. Students, families, teachers united. That unity doesn't stop at one decision. It's a motto for how we should move forward, because student leadership and teacher advocacy should not be as separate fights. We are more powerful when we stand together and when we fight for, for better schools as one community. We're incredibly grateful to see signs of that investment in the proposed budget, the ten thousand for Lynn English, ten thousand for Lynn Classical, and five thousand for Lynn Tech. That funding matters. It tells us that student voices have, have value, and that when we organize, we're heard. We also want to thank the Lynn Teachers Union for pushing, negotiating, and ultimately winning a thirty percent increase in extracurricular stipends. That victory supports the educators who keep clubs, teams, and activities running, often with little recognition. But there's still more to do. Our extracurriculars are still unfunded, underfunded. Transportation is still unreliable. Clubs lack resources. Students are showing up, and so are educators, but they're doing everything, they're doing it without the support they deserve. So, tonight, I ask you to do more than just approve a budget. I ask you to keep building the culture we started this year. When our students and educators move together, not in isolation, let's build schools where student leadership is expected, not exceptional, where teacher advocacy is uplifted, not overlooked, where investment isn't just promised but practiced. Because if this year taught us anything, it's that we win when we are united and we are just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's the end of the signups. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Last call for open mic.
I would like to.
Yep, please. Yep, just name and address, please.
Kathleen Powers. My address is eleven Sanderson Avenue. I wasn't prepared to talk, so I'm going to try to be brief because I know you have work to do. I just want to say, we can talk about scores and budgets and everything. I'm sorry, I get, when I get upset about my kids, I get like this. We are a whole unit. It's not just the teachers. It's not just the clinicians. It's not just the supervisors. When I come to Marshall every day, our kids are at such a heightened, you know, state of anxiety because of everything that's going on with ICE. And as Ms. Dusette said, I think her name was Dusette, said about, you know, the large Hispanic population, I go to school every day before I can teach anything. I have to get my kids settled and happy and feel safe. If we make these cuts in this budget, I don't know what's going to happen to our kids. Especially the clinical supervisor at my school, she has a new team. Almost every year, people come and go. She has been a very consistent presence, Ms. Cody, and I can't imagine, and also the hall monitors. When we are overwhelmed with all the state of anxiety that the children are in, the hall monitors step in and they calm them when nobody else can and the clinicians are too busy. So, I really want you to consider that when you consider this budget. These, we, this kids, it's critical that they feel safe, and if we make cuts, they won't feel safe. We can't do everything. We need a whole unit to do it. All right? That's all I really wanted to say. All right?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Last call for open mic. Yep. Name and address.
Heather Lang, live at forty-three Osgood Street in Salem. I'm urging you to reconsider the proposed budget and approach it again with fresh eyes, especially in light of these potential cuts to student-facing positions. As many of you may know, I was one of the semifinalists for the State Teacher of the Year Award in twenty, for twenty-twenty-five, and I've had the honor of working alongside some extraordinary educators and witnessing firsthand the profound impact that committed teachers and specialists have on students' out, student outcomes across all demographics. The proposed reductions stand to deeply affect our most vulnerable students, particularly those in special education and English learner programs. These students rely heavily on consistent individualized support from dedicated educators who understand their unique needs. Reducing staff would not only increase caseloads but onto unsustainable levels, but also severely undermine our ability to deliver equitable and effective instruction across the board. Furthermore, cuts to honors-level courses and AP diminish, diminish access to academic rigor for our high-achieving students, and these opportunities are essential for preparing students for college careers, and for some, they provide motivation and challenge to keep them engaged in school. By limiting these courses, we risk sending the message that excellence is negotiable. Every line in the budget represents more than just a number. It represents a student, a future, and a commitment to equitable education, which is part of our motto, if I'm not mistaken. I recognize the financial constraints that you face, but I implore you to prioritize solutions that minimize the harm to direct student services. We can find a path forward that protects the heart of our schools, the educators who work with our students every day, and the students who are within, within them. Thank you for your time, your service, and your continued dedication to the community.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. We will close the open mic portion of the evening and move into the eleventh regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadewight?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
We'll take a brief recess.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadewight?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Since we amended the agenda, the next item is a ratification of votes taken in executive session, and we did take a vote in executive session, and, uh, Member Peña, would you like to make a motion to take that vote out here?
Make a motion to bring the vote out in public.
Great. To approve our memorandum of understanding with the Lynn Teachers Union Local One Zero Three Seven?
Double.
All right.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I do have something.
Yep.
I want to thank Sheila O'Neill, all of the unions, members that were on that committee that came up with such a great budget that impacts everybody, but I'm, I'm really, like, first time in forty years, unbelievable. Thank you.
Great. I also want to thank Sheila O'Neill for her leadership and all her service to the district, the entire negotiating team. The way all the committees and subcommittees dove into really substantive issues that are hard and complicated, but did it in good faith, is, is really the, the best of collective bargaining, to get to results that we can feel good about. Doesn't make our issues go away, but it shows that they're all of our issues that we're working on together, and it's just a moment of real pride, I think, and excitement for this, for this district to be able to take this vote. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
abstain.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
abstain.
Member Sadewight?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
I'm going to sign here while we're in open session. There it is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Too far away.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
We'll put in the minutes what her, that her t-shirt says, Activists Never Retire. Congratulations. Congratulations, congratulations again to the whole team, Dr. Alvarez, Mr. McHugh, Attorney Greenspan, uh, the, all the administrators, Daniel from my office, and again, Member Peña, Chair of the Subcommittee, uh, so excited to move forward on that, so thank you. All right, next is the minutes. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes, um, Committee to the, Committee of the Hall Meeting on May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, Committees Curriculum Subcommittee Meeting on May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, and the tenth regular meeting on May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hides have it. Next, we have donations. What's recommendation?
The recommendation is to accept Lynn Classical High School Nineties Fund to Classical High Principal Scholarship in the amount of two thousand, and Drew Bennett and Dale Bennett, Tech alumni and Tech Automotive IT and Athletics in the amount of twenty-five thousand.
Second. I mean, so moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hides have it. Next, we have the ratification of the school business administrator's contract. You may recall that this was, uh, a vote that we had taken in executive session, uh, that, uh, we wanted to finalize before we ratified in regular session, um, and it's a three-year extension, um, for the school business administrator, Mr. McHugh, um, with raises that track the, the, whatever, any, any COLAs, um, that the administrative association would, would receive. Is that right? Attorney Greenspan?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to ratify the school, school business administrator's contract. Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
No.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. And we're gonna pass this down, because we want to sign two copies here while we're in session. Sign it, please.
Did you sign it?
Yeah, you gotta sign it, yep. Uh, yeah, everybody signs it. All right, next, we have ratification of interim chief academic officer's contract. The interim chief academic officer is Dr. Jennifer Shorter, and this is a, uh, one-year term. It's interim position. Anything you want to add tonight?
I've signed already.
No, it's just a, a one-year agreement.
Yep.
And, uh, the salary is, uh, the same as the deputies.
Okay. This one, this one, the school committee does not sign, it's just a ratification.
Right.
Yeah. Um, okay, is there a motion? Yep.
There's only three school committee members on.
Is there anything on page eight?
Motion accept.
Great. Second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yep.
Can we discuss the context behind this?
This is, this is a, um, contract that was approved in executive session that we're now ratifying, but yeah, the context, meantime, like why this is happening?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's important.
Can you share, please?
Sure, we, absolutely, thank you for that, Member Reed. We, um, had, so Dr. Shorter was the Executive Director of Data Assessment and Accountability, and in looking at closing some of the non-union administrative positions, um, the Executive Director of DAT was one of those positions, and so, uh, Dr. Shorter agreed to take on a number of responsibilities, um, including data, assessment, and accountability, um, innovation, and some professional development for diversity, equity, and inclusion, so that all of those things lived under academics instead of being siloed, and that would also bring us to eliminate one full non-union position. Originally, I had proposed, uh, doing a deputy instead, and so this would allow, uh, a deputy to continue to do, um, stu-, a student and, and school principal-facing support.
Can I just say something on that? Yeah, so just to, basically some of what she said, but just to be clear, because I think a lot of people look at this and think that we're just giving a raise, let's say we're giving a raise, which is fine, but we're actually saving a lot of money because we're merging two positions together. So, um, I think it was, you know, that was ultimately why I made the decision I made is I think it's saving the district a lot of money, especially at a time we were trying to find money for this budget, so I think it makes a lot of sense, and also I want to note that, uh, it was within Dr. Alvarez's purview to, um, to appoint, uh, Dr. Shorter as Chief Academic Officer, but I believe that she still has to go through the process of, um, of, of any, you know, employee, new employee, once her interim period is up, so.
Correct. The position will be posted, and if she, after one year, um, still would like to take on or assume the responsibilities, or I guess at that point, we would decide if those things would be split, academics and data, again, resuming the other position. I think, um, that's to be determined for school year twenty-seven.
Do we know how much this saves exactly? I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's...
I think Mr. McHugh could probably tell us, um, in terms of the actual position and what the saving, the cost savings is, but I do know that with the three executive, um, directors, it's, uh, a little bit over five hundred thousand dollars.
It's all right, we don't have to do this now, but...
Any other discussion?
Eighty-nine thousand.
Any other, any other discussion? Yep.
Yeah, uh, just on the other side of the coin, um, just, uh, to express my opposition to this was, uh, just kind of the way it was presented, we didn't have Dr. Shorter's resume at the time, um, of that executive session, um, so, just, uh, kind of a little other side of the coin there, so.
Great. Yep, Member Castellanos.
Yeah, so, uh, to, um, Member Dugan, I, I felt the same way, um, I want to maybe see a little bit more of a due process, um, and, oh, sorry, I saw the button, I know. No, so it was, uh, for me, I, I just thought the same thing, but I know Dr. Alvarez exercised the interim route, saved, it was a good strategy, you know, and that ultimately, that's what was the outcome in executive session, so.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Yep, Member Castellanos?
I just want to echo both of them, and that's the reason for my stance as well.
Great, great, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
No.
Member Dugan?
No.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
No.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, next item is a vote to approve the extension of two Lynn Teachers Union visas and refer future use of the visas to the policy subcommittee. Uh, I want, I want to thank all of the, um, students and, and teachers and educators and committee members who, uh, put a spotlight on this issue, we really appreciate it. Uh, I think, obviously, uh, immigration, um, law as it interacts with employment can be a complicated one, I think, uh, there, the district is, uh, wants to ask itself some, some questions about how this should work, um, in the future, uh, but understanding that there is, uh, right now in front of us, um, two Lynn, Lynn teachers that, that this directly affects, and, and wanting to resolve this for those individuals who, who have, um, uh, served the district and, and, and our students in, in important ways, um, wanted to see if we could resolve, resolve that for them while we work on the global policy going forward with, uh, policy subcommittee. Member Dugan chairs, I'm sure Attorney Greenspan will be involved as well. Uh, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of the two LTU teacher visas and refer future use of visas to the policy subcommittee.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I, I just want to thank, uh, the superintendent and everyone else for, um, being open-minded on this. I know it's sort of not a, a clear-cut answer, it's, it's gray, and this is sort of the thinking I had, uh, right away, is, you know, let's make it right this time, and let's have a clear-cut policy, this is no gray area in, in the future, so thank you for working with us on this, it's, it's a big deal.
Thank you. Yep, Member Gaitley.
Um, I also would like to thank, um, Superintendent Alvarez, but I also would like to thank, um, Member Sadowite for all her effort in looking into different things so that we came up with that idea, and you did an excellent job at getting it through, and the whole, all that staff and students over there at Classical are grateful. Thank you so much for your due diligence on this issue.
Great. Member Dugan?
Yeah, um, and I just want to thank the staff at Classical that came out in support of this. Um, I think, it, that particular night, I think it was Gabe from Neighbor to Neighbor, uh, said, "This is how a democracy should look and work," so I think we are, are making the right move by putting this on the agenda, and, uh, and I'm excited that we got here, so, thank you.
Great, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Next, we have the budget. Uh, so, this is, um, culmination of a process that's played out over the last several months. Um, we, uh, had the administration present it a couple meetings ago, the proposed budget, uh, had, uh, lots of, uh, great questions, uh, and, and suggestions from the school committee, as well as the, the general public, um, over the last several weeks, and, uh, had the public hearing this evening. I think a lot of the questions were probably, and opinions were probably shared prior to the public hearing, hence the, uh, lack of participants who signed up, um, but nonetheless, uh, this is, this is an incredibly important process that the district goes through every year, and, and particularly challenging. Uh, this year, with a lot happening, um, I, uh, am really grateful to everyone who has, uh, committed, um, the, the work and the, uh, interest in improving the district and shared their feedback. Um, I think as a result of that feedback, um, we, uh, the, the, the district has revised its, its proposed budget, um, so I want to, I want to give Dr. Alvarez and, and, and Mr. McHugh, whoever from the administration wants to, to sort of share an update on that, um, and then what I think I, what I plan to do is ask for a motion to approve that we can then get on the table and then, you know, take it from there. So, Dr. Alvarez.
Thank you. So, um, we worked, uh, through the administrative positions that we, um, could then convert into funds to hire back seven clini-, clinicians, um, which are back in this revised and proposed budget. Um, Mr. McHugh, would, could you go over just the positions that we, uh, modified, please?
Sure. In this last round, uh, we, uh, had an open position that, at the New Casa Program, was a counselor, uh, at the MLE. We are eliminating an assistant director, uh, the early childhood program. We will be closing a program specialist. Um, at the curriculum department, we are closing an assistant director for world languages. Uh, we are going to, um, remove one TBD from the superintendent's page, and we have the coordinator of private partnerships resign a few weeks back, and, uh, that person was only part-time, and, uh, they were originally hired before we even started the Innovation and Grants Department, they were the first person, so that we're not going to fill that job because the Innovation and Grants will be taking over that work. So, that saved us six hundred and twenty-four thousand, one thirty-three, which it's, we're going to put back seven clinicians, which is six hundred and twelve, eight thirty-six, and there was a balance left, uh, available balance of eleven thousand, two ninety-seven, and I moved that to the substitute account at this time, because substitutes is always one of those things that we have to deal with, so we're able to put back seven of the clinicians, and the rationale was that the cost of a clinician is, um, cost-effective compared to the supervisor positions, which are a very, a large amount of money. Uh, the average cost of one of the supervised, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars compared to a clinician that averages at eighty-seven thousand and change, so we'd wanted to get the most staff we could put back, so we felt that this was the best option to move forward with.
Any questions on that? Yep, Member Gaitley.
I just have a quick question about the, um, supervisor, clinical supervisor. Teachers, back in the day, when we were cut, um, we lost our jobs, um, and, and upper administrators, maybe department heads, might have to go back into the classroom as a teacher, so I'm wondering if the clinical supervisor, next year, if that, if there's an opening for a clinical supervisor, they would be able to move into that position?
Yeah, absolutely. They, they could potentially, if there are openings at the end of this year, or sometime in the summer, if those positions post-open, any of, um, those staff members that do not have the, uh, administrative position could reapply if it's open.
And do you, they have like a seniority list?
They do have a seniority list.
So we could, okay, I, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes, we could work with LSAA, uh, through that seniority list. The, the clinicians had been identified, um, the supervisors have been identified through dates of seniority, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Member Reed.
Um, clarification question. For the people being cut, uh, at, uh, downtown roles, assistant directors, directors, et cetera, when does their contract actually end? Would it be effective as of today, or as of the new fiscal year, or what, what exactly, when would they be cut?
Once the budget's approved, it would be effective at that point.
Thank you.
Great. Um, there's another sort of clarifying question, I think it'd be helpful for someone to make a motion to...
Can I, can I just clarify? Kevin, I think what Member Reed is asking, right, we budgeted through June thirtieth for those positions.
Yes.
Right? So it would be effective that it's a, it, it will not open July one?
That's, that's what I, yes, you're correct. Thank you for the clarification.
June thirtieth, right.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like, uh, go ahead.
Make a motion to accept the budget.
Okay.
Let's go here, twenty-two, six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Member Reed, the member Castellanos.
Yeah, I just wanted some big-picture comments. I mean, I think for a lot of us, it's been a grueling process, uh, I think it's the first thing you think about when you wake up, and the last thing you think about when you go to bed for the last, uh, even before it came out, last few months. Uh, this is certainly not a perfect budget, and it was up to me entirely, I think it would look a lot different. Um, I think there's a lot of things I still disagree with, um, I think we're still cutting too many people, uh, especially in areas of, of high need, and I think some of these moves will lead to higher class sizes, um, in the gate, some of the sort of smaller class sizes at some of the new facilities, and, um, I also think we're making investments with, you know, uh, I don't think the backup plans are always great, but, you know, having said that, uh, I think there's obviously a lot of pros that are so hard to ignore. Obviously, the teacher contract, uh, the historical teacher contract is, is a huge bright spot, um, the, you know, the increase in extracurriculars, as well as the line item for extracurriculars is something that was very important to me, and that I think is, uh, gonna be a game-changer, and also, uh, the reduction in administration downtown, that's been something I've been trying to work on since the day I got on this committee, and, uh, thank you for everyone for working with us on that, I think it's huge, and even after the budget came out, I think, you know, all the activity around department heads, while, you know, situation isn't settled, and, uh, it's certainly not ideal, um, it's, you know, I think we made a lot of progress, and then with clinicians, uh, you know, I think if these moves weren't made, things would look a lot different, but Member Castellanos has really led the charge, uh, to try to, you know, bring a lot of these people back, and, and they are coming back, and, and, and a lot of other members have supported that, so I think, um, you know, I think there's a lot of pros and, and, and a lot of cons, and, uh, it's just been a tough process for all of us, and thank you everyone for working together, and, uh, just want to, you know, give my big-picture thoughts on this, this whole thing, so.
Thank you. Member Castellanos.
Uh, so I actually had one question that, uh, came in a little bit too, it was this morning, uh, I want to thank Deputy Superintendent Goris for actually fielding that question. Um, it was towards the end of the book, as you can imagine, it was a thick book, um, but I definitely, um, I, I appreciate the, the work that you did to answer it, like, if, if you mind, I'm just gonna ask the question, if we could just have a little bit of a discussion on what you shared.
Yeah.
Um, so this morning, um, I, uh, so I noticed on the attendance budget sheet that we're not filling the case, man-
Um, it was towards the end of the book. As you can imagine, it was a thick book. Um, but I definitely, um, I, I appreciate the, the work that you did to answer it. Like, if, if you mind, I'm just going to ask the question. If we could just have a little bit of a discussion of what you shared? Um, so, this morning, um, I, uh, so I noticed on the attendance budget sheet that we're not filling the case manager position. And it was slated for, for zero for FY twenty-six. Uh, given the reduction in staffing within the attendance department, uh, what plans are in place to ensure that unaccompanied youth and students who have been chronically absent and in many cases dropped from enrollment continue to receive the individualized support and re-engagement efforts they need? How will the essential responsibilities of the attendance case manager role be redistributed, particularly those tied, uh, to alternative education pathways, uh, community outreach, and intensive case management for our most at-risk student populations? That's my, two questions.
So, you want me to read my answer?
Yes. Yeah. Just for the public, you know, it's, you did really good.
Didn't want to fake the fun.
It was really nice.
Yeah. So, as the Deputy Superintendent for, of secondary schools and programs, I oversee the attendance department and the district's attendance school. Um, so, the role of the case manager has been in place since 2022 to support the overwhelming amount of unaccompanied youth, ages eighteen-plus, that were enrolling in high school but not attending and/or dropping out. Given the current enforcement of undocumented immigrants and, uh, from the federal government, the increased enforcement at the borders and the maximum age of attendance policy, we had significant decline of unaccompanied youth enrolling in LPS. Of the seventy-six students eighteen-plus that enrolled in LPS this school year, twenty, or twenty percent of those are former LPS students. So, they were our students and then they dropped out. And we're trying to get them to come back. They're coming back, but we wanted to give them some support to keep them on track. Um, so, the case manager filled that role to, to, was a, like a, a third person in addition to their guidance counselor and social worker. So, um, of those twenty-six dropped out since, uh, approved, uh, to enroll back in LPS, eight currently have twenty-plus unexcused absences, um, since approved and are not on track to graduate with their cohort. Um, so, this school year, um, the student case manager supported the twenty former LPS students directly and it resulted in eight out of the twenty students in need of continued case management to complete their high school credentials. So, eight more next year. Um, the twenty-one guidance counselors and the twenty social workers at the secondary schools are able to absorb direct support of those fourteen remaining students, um, who are on track. In addition, we have a partnership with Center Board and they're offering some mentoring to the male students that have no father present in their lives. And we intend to continue our strong partnership with community-based organizations and alternative education programs.
Thank you. And I have just some closing remark, thank you for that. Um, just some closing remarks.
Yep.
So, as we navigate at one of the most challenging fiscal periods in recent memory, the school committee's role in shaping and improving the education budget is, has been more important than ever. Every dollar we allocate reflects our values, our commitment to the students, families, and educators of Lynn. Uh, the budget is more than just a financial document. Excuse me. I lost my space. So, the budget is more than just a financial document. It's a statement of priorities. In these tough economic times, we must focus on what matters, what matters most, ensuring our students have the resources, support, and opportunities they need to succeed. And that's why transparency in the, in this process is essential. Um, the public always deserves to see how decisions are made, where funds are going, and why certain programs are prioritized. And transparency builds trust, encourages community input, and helps ensure that we're being accountable stewards of tax dollar, taxpayer dollars. Um, and I, I just want to just thank my, the, my colleagues, everyone here that's worked on this budget. This has been a very intense budget cycle. Uh, I want to congratulate LTU as well. I know it's, it's, it's been a lot of emotional-charged, um, discussions. And I'm very grateful and humbled to have had the opportunity to share, um, where I stand. And I look forward to, uh, seeing the vote.
Thank you. Remember Dugan?
That's a hard act to follow, as always, when you follow Brian. So, thank you for those, uh, statements, Brian. Um, sort of big-picture, similar, remember Reed? Um, there's so many good things in this budget, um, and it's hard to ignore them. Um, m- my biggest concern moving forward is just, you know, with the department head moves that we're making and, and the clinical supervisors that we're moving, making sure we're really clear about where those, um, you know, uh, administrative duties are going. Uh, for example, teacher evaluations. Um, I just went through mine, so that's on the top of my brain right now. But, um, you know, i- i- it's a daunting task as an, I've never been an administrator. I am friendly with many of them, uh, but I, so I know it's a daunting task, uh, as an administrator and as a teacher as well. Uh, so, that's sort of my biggest concern, especially at the secondary levels, just making sure we're getting that right. Um, because it is a huge part of, you know, our, our day-to-day life for our educators. Um, but all that being said, there is so many positives that are going to positively affect our students in this budget. Um, and we just simply can't ignore those things. So, uh, thank you to all the members that says, uh, you know, echo what a few people have said. I think my family's going to be a lot happier. That I'll be a lot less grumpy when I get home tonight, hopefully. Um, but, uh, it is, you know, we're, we're affecting people's lives. So, it is, you know, you wake up in the morning and it's in the top of your brain and I go to work and it distracts me. But as soon as I get in my car out of work, it's, it's what I'm thinking about again and, and taking phone calls on it. So, uh, it's been a lot of work. So, thank you to all of you that have put in the time to get this right, hopefully.
I just wanted to echo as well, thank you to everybody. It has definitely been difficult. I will echo the waking up in the morning, this is what we think of going to bed. This is what we think of. It'd be nice to be able to sleep, uh, tonight. Um, but, you know, the, the stance that I've taken is also the open picture from all of these comments that have made, been made as well. So, I just want to let everyone know that, you know, the, the, the votes, the conclusion that we have come to, um, has definitely been reflective of the pros and cons and, and, and moving forward, the positive impact that things could have. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, I, I just want to also add, um, I really appreciate everyone's work on this, a- all the feedback that we got from the, from the public, from educators and students and, and families, uh, and community partners. I think, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a challenging time fiscally. It's a particularly challenging time in education. I, I said earlier how excited I was about the, uh, contract being approved and, and that is really helpful for budgeting as well. Um, so, we, we appreciate that. Uh, having that certain need to, to be able to head into this vote knowing what, what our obligations are going to be, uh, for the next year to, to, to fulfill our obligations to our employees. So, that's very encouraging. Um, thanks to everybody who submitted the thoughtful questions. I mean, I think to anyone who doubts the, the passion and importance of local democracy, I would suggest you look at the Lynn Public Schools budget page because you'll see dozens of questions that the members submitted. And I think, um, it's fair for me to say that everybody in this community could submit a question and, and if you don't have none of the answer off the top of your head, we're going to, we're going to get an answer. Uh, and you see that. And the, the LPS team, I thought, took all those questions really seriously and really provided thoughtful answers and rationale, tran- transparency. And that, that's all out there. There, there's, there's clearly differences of opinion and, and tough decisions to make. Um, but I, I really appreciate how, how seriously everyone takes the process. And, and now we can, I think, be able to say that we, we uncovered a lot of great insight, uh, as part of the deliberative process and, and hopefully, um, arrived at, at the, the best result under the, the circumstances. And the circumstances, as always, is, uh, the Lynn Public Schools doesn't get to choose how much money it has. Uh, they, they get to allocate to the best of their abilities, the, the, the amount that's made available to them. Um, and I appreciate the superintendent, Mr. McQ, deputies, everyone that worked on it, um, and the feedback that we got from, from everybody, um, particularly those who are in the, in the classroom to make that happen. So, thank you. Roll call, please. Oh, yeah. Right. We, we gotta, um, make this into three different votes. So, uh, I'm going to ask Member Peña to accept a friendly amendment to his motion. You made the motion, right? And the first, the first, uh, motion is going to be to accept the fiscal year twenty-six budget teacher salary amount. So, we're going to separate out, yeah, teacher salary, non-teacher salary, and non-salary. So, we're going to take three votes, um, to allow for those who have conflicts to abstain from the, from the first vote. So, this first motion is a motion for the budget teacher salary amount of one hundred and forty-eight million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars.
Still move.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Abstain.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Abstain.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. And next, I would invite a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty-six budget non-teacher salary amount in the amount of seventy million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Sadoway?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Members Sadoway.
Yes. And then finally, a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty-six budget in the non-salary amount of forty-nine million, seven hundred and one thousand, two hundred and thirteen.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda was a mid-cycle review of superintendent's evaluation. And we're going to ask for that discussion to happen at the next meeting. There's some info in your packet on that because, uh, just wanted folks to have some context. Uh, I think generally, the idea is that, um, we, the, the superintendent evaluation is on a pretty tight timeline. There's a lot to do in a year and by definition, it's an annual evaluation. So, you really got to get it done in a year if you're going to stay on calendar. Um, and you remember, we all, we all pick the goals and the indicators and stuff. And I think the superintendent, um, want an opportunity to, to sort of refresh our recollection as to what those were and, and sort of do a check-in as to what, what's happened so far. Um, and so, that information's in your packet and then we'll have it on the agenda next time for whatever kind of discussion. Yeah.
I thought, so we set, she set the goals last time and then we have an opportunity to set the goals this time, right?
For the, for the next fiscal... Yeah. So, that'll be in the fall. The, this is, this isn't, there's no votes, um, that I'm expecting on, on the mid-cycle.
Okay, okay.
It's just an update.
Okay.
And then in the fall, um, we'll, we'll all work together to set them for the, for the next year.
For clarification, remember Reed? The committee did set the, um, they, you did select indicators in October. So, those will be reviewed at the year mark in October again or end of September, October, when, with those specific indicators that the committee selected.
Okay. But the goals were not selected.
The goals are there, yes. The goals were there and those indicators relate. For example, if you picked indicator to... Right. It'll say instructional, um, priorities. And then there's like a whole menu of things that can be selected. So, those were selected.
Any other questions on that? I'll be on the next time, too. No communications? I would like to take the, or, you want to go first?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to take a moment, um, first to thank everyone throughout, um, this very difficult budget process, um, to the committee members, to our parents, teachers, students, uh, that, uh, came and, and spoke and, and also not just here in public, but also took the time to email and to communicate in other ways through our student cabinets, um, and through, uh, you know, the process that, that, of communication, ongoing commu-, open, ongoing and open communication. Um, I want to take a moment to just thank and make sure that everyone is aware. Um, we, Deputy, um, Marisol Goris came to our district two years ago. Um, and she was an addition that we did not know we needed. Um, she has been, uh, nothing but exceptional in the time that she's worked with all of us. And she has decided to pursue a career in writing. And we are very jealous because she's moving to Spain over the summer. Um, and we're going to miss her very dearly. So, I know there will be another deputy, but no one like Marisol Goris. So, I just want to thank you for all the time that you gave our students, our staff, and our community.
I, I want to add to that because when Dr. Alvarez just mentioned that Deputy Goris has been with us for two years, that seems wrong because it feels like you've been here for a long, much longer because you've had, uh, that, that amount of impact, um, and built those relationships in, in many corners of the city. And, uh, that level of, of interest in the community you serve and, and ability to afford those connections while, uh, providing that educational leadership um, that you do is, uh, is, is a really special combination and we greatly appreciate you sharing with us. So, good luck.
I also want to talk to you, um, the member, I mean superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Goris. Um, I was your supervisor on the influence of one hundred and it was an honor to do that for you. And it opened my mind to a lot of things and I really appreciate you asking me to do that. And it doesn't seem like she's only been here for two years. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for taking, taking time out of your, your schedule to, to do that mentoring part.
My pleasure. It's my pleasure.
Great. Let's see it on the agenda.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, yeah.
A few more things. Um, I, I just want to thank everyone, the school committee members, um, the students, the teachers, the principals, my deputy colleagues, and Dr. Alvarez for, you know, giving me this opportunity and joy of being able to serve in a community that is similar to how I grew up and allowed me to fulfill my dream of being at the table representing, um, you know, the story that I lived and being able to share that journey, um, with decision-makers at the table. I made strong connections here in Lynn because I, I believe we've all have a journey that we've gone on and, um, every single person around this table seems to always, um, root for the underdog. And that's what I love about, about Lynn. Um, you guys are all fighters. You stand up for what's right and you will not, um, let anything stop you or get in your way. So, it's that kind of leadership and that kind of passion that's important for the future of the city. And I encourage you to continue on with that passion. I am honored that I have the opportunity in my life to choose, um, my next journey and be able to take a leap of faith. And I hope that I can write stories that, um, the future Lynn students will read in the future in their classrooms. Thank you for letting me lead here. Appreciate it.
Can we have a retreat in Spain?
Barcelona!
Absolutely not.
Is that a violation of something?
No. Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
Eight o'clock. Oh, no, seven fifty-nine.